Clerk will call the rolls, being recorded on Zoom. I'll be the clerk, Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Counselor Bartley.
Here.
Counselor Grani.
Here.
Counselor Hernandez.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
And present.
Counselor Labor Martinez. Counselor Lisi. Counselor McGee here. Counselor McGivern. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Here.
Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Motion, take one off the table?
Motion to go to item one, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Item one. Or at the city council adopt the 171 amendment to chapter two of the revisions code of ordinances for the city of Hoyok regarding the following sections, this would be to the administrative personnel administrator, resident requirement for department heads and city treasurer appointment in turn. And then we got it in legal form, it was moved off to a special meeting to allow people to take a view of the language. Counselor McGivern is here, I see.
I'm thinking maybe the vice chair of ordinance could make a motion, then we could just get it going.
Motion would be to receive and adopt and pass the first reading.
And make a motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to make two small amendments. One is, I'm going to amend that, so the language is after add and adding his place, assistant treasurer shall be sworn to the faithful performance of his duties. I want to change that to his/her duties. And then, then it goes, and the record shall be made of his appointment and oath, I want to change that to his/her appointment and oath.
Second.
And then, and then it goes on to say, and shall give bond for the faithful performance of his duties, I want to change that to his/her duties.
Second.
And then the last one, it says, and in the amount determined by the commission of revenue, Todd does a comma there after determined, I just want to remove the comma.
Alright, so hold on a second, let me catch up with all of them. Alright, so I got amending one, two, three, hises to his/her and removing a comma towards the end by the commissioner of revenue.
That's it.
Any, anyone further on this? So on those amendments, it was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I think a motion referred to a law department, they put it in legal form.
Second. Now, a second motion is to ref-
Under discussion, Mr. President.
And second under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Is our city solicitor present?
Yes.
Crystal, could you put this in legal form and sign off on it right now?
Uh, I can't right now, I don't have the file access at the moment. I can do it tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Just under discussion, Mr. President.
Counselor Bartley.
I, I think if, if all the counselors have the language in front of them, I don't know why we need to send this back to to legal, we have amended this and we do this kind of regularly. So I would think it would be okay the way it is, unless I'm missing something, thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Um, we, we talked about this in the recent past, I don't know how we got away from it, but we vote on final draft, not final draft, we vote on final form. And we've in the past for minor changes, and I, they appear to be minor changes, I heard them so quick, I'm not really sure exactly what just happened. But what we have in front of us is, I don't even have a signed copy, Mr. President.
I have the signed copy here.
I believe, and I was going to ask you that. And I have no problem with that under the Zoom and COVID situation that we operate. But the legal form is, is the, what we vote on and what goes into the code itself. And, you know, by I, I think, you know, anyone would agree with me that, you know, we've seen some things that have been adopted in the past. And then we think we've adopted one thing and a couple of minor changes and something else maybe inadvertently gets put into the code. And the next thing you know, we're living with what goes into the code. So we, you know, we tossed this out in committee, you guys did a great job in the ordinance committee. Unfortunately, it happened so quick last week, we didn't have the legal form, the legal form was sent to us and it's been amended tonight, so I'm just asking that it'd be put in writing. And, you know, we could do it now if it were possible, but I guess it's not. Just to put it in writing so we can adopt the written form as we are required to.
On that, and I understand the concern, I'll explain, because I know Counselor Labor Martinez has just joined. Counselor Bartley, and it was seconded and then approved. If you go to page two, it says adding and adding in its place, the assistant treasurer shall be sworn to the faithful performance of-
Can we share this on the screen so we can at least see it?
Jeffrey, is there a way to share this on the screen?
Yeah, let me just get the, the document up so that I can get it shared.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor Grani.
What, is it going to make a big difference if we wait until next Tuesday night for the regular meeting to do?
That would I defer to Counsel, I defer to Counsel Murphy, and, and I can explain when, when I was in there, we were trying to fill that position and get someone in there, there's three applicants, all three were from outside the city. No one from the city had applied. And that was one of the reasons why I filed the order with Counselor Lisi, because it was mentioned to us by the prior personnel directors that they weren't getting applicants from Hoyok. So I don't know if Counselor Murphy has gotten to the point where he's trying to fill it and needs this, so I'll defer to him, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, if at all possible, the sooner I get it, and the reason I called for the special order is to try to get certainly I need, I have request, been requested by the treasurer to try to get that through, but also the personnel director, because we, we need to get going in terms of other kind of hirings, including the assistant treasurer, we're going to need him in the law department. And I'm sure there's others that I need to get moving, and obviously having somebody right now, especially in the personnel office, would really make a difference. I did, and I want to compliment Naomi Cologne, who I met with, and she, she is doing a lot of exceptional work, from what I gather, she's provided me a lot of information, but she's not in that position to be able to oversee the hiring applications, and she really has, you know, she likes what her job is. So if, if we can move this, and again, it's from what I've seen from Counselor Bartley's amendments, they're pretty much just trying to be gender neutral for the most part, and I think one of them was grammatical, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, it's, it's gender neutral and then taking a comma out, correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Grani.
Then if we don't pass this tonight, that means you're going to have to call another special meeting this week, or the mayor is going to have to call another special meeting this week, correct?
You can't, you have open meeting laws, you'd have to have 48 hours, so most likely it'd be pushed off till next week. Or if you get in on Friday, by Friday.
Yeah, well, then the point is pretty well moved then, okay, thank you.
So Jeffrey, can you scroll down to page two? So, down here, it says, on the bottom paragraph, just before section four, the assistant treasurer shall be sworn to the faithful performance of his slash, his duties, that's now going to be his slash her. And records shall be made of his slash her appointment and oath, the assistant treasurer shall be assistant in the United States and shall given bond annually and faithfully performance of his slash her duties. And informer of proven amount determined, remove the comma and by the commissioner of revenue, so just removing that comma, those are your changes.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon.
Just as a point of information, the copy that I received was signed of the legal language.
Yeah, my, mine here is the original. You know, just to let people know.
Signed by Jenna, not Crystal.
Correct, signed by Jenna and Counselor, or acting Mayor Murphy.
Mayor Murphy, yes.
And I did try to make sure everything comes signed, yeah. Believe me, I'm trying to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, we do have it.
Alright, anyone further, Counselor McGivern?
We need a signature of the city solicitor for legal form. I could, Mr. President, the changes are minor, in the past we've had the city solicitor initial. I think under the circumstances, if Crystal is willing to tell us these are minor changes and see what initial on I certainly understand the urgency of what we're trying to do. The one answer I was waiting for was on the assistance, if the assistant treasurer lives out of town, can they perform the duties of the treasurer when the treasurer's position is vacant?
Yes, because they would be acting and there'd be a temporary appointment.
No, my question is, if they're living, if they live out of town, can they, can they still perform the duties of the elected position treasurer? I'd ask that in committee.
Was there an answer to that, or wait?
We're waiting on an answer.
Is Crystal there, or she, no?
I'm here, I don't, I thought removing the residency requirement is what we were looking for. As an acting treasurer, their residency wouldn't be an issue.
The treasurer is an elected official by charter. My question was, if the assistant, we always had the assistant treasurer to have residency because of the charter relation, if the, if the treasurer, as it is now, position is vacant, the assistant automatically takes over for the elected official. I just want to know if it's okay.
They're only performing in an acting capacity, they wouldn't be replacing the elected official, so.
But their duties would be down of an elected official in an acting capacity. Acting is just, just, just a word that the person is not elected, but still performs, the acting mayor performs all the duties of the mayor. The acting mayor is mayor. The acting treasurer performs all the duties of the treasurer, I think the silence, the charter is silent than anything else, and therefore is treasurer.
Right, there's a lot of positions that have residency requirements for department heads and people who are not residents take over those duties. I understand there's a difference because you're talking an elected position versus unappointed or a hired position, but I think the situation would still work the same, however, if is at the, you know, decision of the body that they choose to make it so that someone acting as an elected position would need a residency, then we wouldn't want to change the assistant treasurer residency requirement.
Thank you.
If there's no one further, the amendments were already approved to change the his to his and hers on three of them and remove the comma. So the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I, I thought we had another mo-, I thought we had another motion.
Did we?
Counselor McGivern had a motion, so.
Oh, sorry, Counselor McGivern, your motion?
I asked if the city solicitor, because Counselor Bartley's amendments were, were, you know, maybe not to form as much as to correct amendments, but that they were minor, that the city solicitor agrees to verbally signing off that we do have legal form tonight, if it's okay with the rest of the body, I withdraw my motion.
So, back to the original motion to pass the first reading with amendments, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yeah.
Yep, so motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion would be that the passage be ordained?
Is the vice chair not here for this, Mr.? Is the vice chair not here?
I don't know.
I mean, I, okay.
Not on mute, alright, so passage at the, or be ordained, clerk will call, yes, you're voting for item one as amended, Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Grani.
No.
Hernandez. Counselor Hernandez. You're on mute. Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Labor Martinez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes, Counselor Lisi is not here, correct? Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
No.
Nine to two. That would pass.
Real quickly, Mr. President, I just want, if, if I have Hoyok residents applying and equal qualifications, that's where I'm going, just so you know, and I'm going to try to still promote it, so see if we can get more people applying.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Grani.
There could be a legal problem with that, as far as that's concerned, on a giving preference to a Hoyok resident, I just want to point that out.
Okay. Motion to go to item two?
Motion to take item two off the table?
Motion to take item two off the table, from Counselor McGivern, that hereby appropriated 5,1096 dollars from special counsel to city solicitor. So motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
So moved.
Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, we, we have had this order, and the item number three in committee discussed at great length, we've made three committee reports, both city council. I believe this evening was to have the legality of a mayor who is in position at the moment to sign off on the, on the orders themselves, is, is that correct?
Yeah, for, for clarification, because I know Counselor Bartley wanted, I think the request today, Counselor Bartley was transfer signatures, just to remind-
You indicated you had, you had signed it, and I just wanted to see the signature.
So, this was, and I know there was confusion on the signature stuff. So this is a refile, I called Tanya when Counselor Bartley brought to our attention that the first readings were not approved in two meetings. And said that since we didn't do it right, we had to refile it, gave the authorization. She refiled it based on the vote, is how we call it. Of which she filed the same transfer that was already originally there to vote on. Where the confusion came in was, it was the mayor's signature on my order to approve that. And that's where we learned that either I made a mistake on clicking his name instead of mine, because it was that E type signature or fill-in signature. But it turns out that it was the software system itself, of which Counselor Murphy has now had that fixed, of which his name appears on there as the acting mayor, and that's how they now get produced correctly. So, that glitch has been fixed, as far as the transfer itself, it wasn't a transfer in and of itself, it was a refile for the vote. So there is no transfer on a signing of a transfer, it was my signature on the order to make that occur. So hopefully that explains, I know it was confusing that night. But what we have before us is, all those are gone, because Tanya even said that probably filing it that way as she looks at it now isn't the proper way to do it, so Counselor Murphy has refiled it, signed the transfer to redo it under his name as a true transfer, not a refile to do the vote over. So I have Counselor Murphy's order here, which is the same order, however, he has signed a transfer order from the department head. Hopefully that explains it correctly. So it's the same two orders, but now with a transfer from Counselor Murphy as acting mayor. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. So we'll make an amendment that we suspend the rolls and take item three along with item two for final vote.
A second.
Motion is to take up item three as well as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item three, just so the public knows, that it's a request of 5,970, uh, fifty-seven dollars from special counsel to city solicitor. So the first one was 5,196 dollars, the second one's 5,957 dollars. Which is what we discussed before, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Once again, the community of finance had vetted these, both of these requests, they were originally filed by then Mayor Morris, filed a second time by Mayor McGee, and now filed a third time by Mayor Murphy. I, I believe they're in front of us legit. The purpose of these transfers and a little bit of history is they are back pay for Crystal Barnes, who dating back to 2018 was performing the duties of city solicitor when our, at that time, Paul Pear had left the city, who was our, the last city solicitor. For some reason, the, and, and there's a little history to, to the law department during Mayor Morrison's term, and this is the first time I think he had tried to correct some mistakes that were made. But the, the history is, you know, Paul Pear had, had been similar to what Crystal Barnes has been going through for the last two and a half years, in that he was a assistant city solicitor, and there was a vacancy in the city solicitor position. And he actually performed for a number of years, the duties of city solicitor before the mayor at that point said he, for all essential purposes, is the, this city solicitor. I somehow came across an article that was very interesting, I don't usually like quoting newspaper articles, but it reminded me of this, it was written by Mike Plaisance for the Republican, originally in Mass Live back in 2013, 2000. And, and essentially the article quoted a number of us, our president at the time, Kevin Jordan, about Paul Pear's diligence in performing the duties. And the, the importance of having a city solicitor to sign off on legal opinions and to sign off in legal form. Part of it even had to say that the law department is operated with the city solicitor, but instead with the assistant city solicitor for several years, with the senior most assistant solicitor being Paul Pear at that time, and we were in the same situation with the senior most assistant city solicitor being Crystal Barnes. Essentially acting as a department head, our president at that time said in the discussion that the department head last week, Morris couldn't immediately be reached for comment, but act about why he chose now to fill the city solicitor position, and why he waited so long, and we never got an answer to that question. The, the issue we have before us, similar to what happened back in 2013 and 14, is, is, I'm sorry, 2014 is when that, when that happened, is what happened in 2018, where once again, there was a vacancy because Paul the assistant solicitor left, and Crystal Barnes, the senior assistant solicitor, took over. And as we all know, has been performing those duties since then. The mayor recently proposed three transfers, one of which we passed, which would cover this year, giving Crystal Barnes the pay of the city, of the city solicitor salary itself. We did not change that salary, we did not amend any ordinances. We're only trying to recognize that the performance of duties should have been recognized back when she started performing them in terms of what salary she should have been paid. It's not even, you know, you can call it acting out of grade, you can't call it acting, it's called, she is the senior assistant solicitor who by ordinance performed the duties of this solicitor, therefore should have been paid without question by, by the auditor and by payroll for these duties. These numbers were calculated, and we've all gone through this in the finance, this would give her the pay that she should have got from those, those dates and times. The question came up is, can we do retroactive pay for the salary increase? Our advice was, it's not a salary increase, but back pay, and yes, we can do back pay. So before us this evening, you know, again, are the two transfers that will correct the mistake that was made by Alex Morris, a mistake that I think, I don't, I don't, you know, we'll go into the details as to what was going on in the mayor's mind, I'm not going to speak for him, but it's a mistake that we can correct, and we can pay our fine city solicitor, Crystal Barnes, the money that she should have had all along. In doing so, I, I think we all recognize that these are, you know, not huge increases to a person's pay, and certainly, also, the one thing I haven't pointed out over the last three, three reports is, when this happened each time, the, the person involved who took over the duties of the city solicitor was also a person who was assigned to the city council. And note that Crystal Barnes is with us once or twice a week, every week, as performing those duties. So not only was she performing the duties of the assistant, as a senior assistant doing the city solicitor duties, which means she managed the office, oversaw the other employees in the office, oversaw the budget, signed legal forms, signed legal opinions, gave legal opinions, she also was with us as the, as the attorney assigned to the city council, for our full city council meetings, and that same person assigned to the ordinance committee meetings, because of the nature of business that the ordinance performs almost every other Tuesday. So I, I'm just asking that, we look at this as back pay, we vetted it out, I'm talking too much, but this pay that she has coming to her, in my humble opinion, that we pass the, pass the transfers this evening, first reading, and then hopefully, if we have enough votes, pass the second reading here tonight or next Tuesday.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. This is the question, and I agree with everything Counselor McGivern has said about Crystal. Not only do I think that's a good job, a great job, but she's also become a friend over the years, more special. You know, I've been here a long time, and over the course of Morris's tenure, we've had some okay city solicitors, and not okay. And just, my opinion, she's a, she's a great city solicitor. But the question that was asked to me, and I just wanted to, you know, put it on record, the fact that we're, we're moving the salary up retro the last few years, but isn't there a residency requirement for the city solicitor? Therefore, if you want to get that pay, you would have had to live in the community.
I can answer that, Mr. President?
Counselor Grani.
We just voted for the assistant city treasurer who has a residency requirement because we couldn't fill that position, and there's a vacancy in the treasurer, it's the exact same thing. Yes, there is a residency requirement for a city solicitor, and unfortunately, Crystal Barnes does not live in the city, but she did perform the duties because she was the eldest assistant city solicitor. If we're going to recognize it for the assistant treasurer, I think it's only fair we recognize it for the assistant, eldest assistant city solicitor doing the same thing.
I agree, I agree with you, but shouldn't we do it by, shouldn't we have to do what we just did? And what, what does this mean going forward, such as perhaps can you please, he lives in South Hadley, does he, could he remain living in South Hadley?
What we did earlier this evening was an ordinance residency change, which is, which addressed the two positions of assistant treasurer and the position of I forget, human, our human resource director, which is totally by ordinance. The difference being is that the treasurer is an elected position, whereas the city solicitor and the human resource director are only positioned by ordinance, because they are positions that were not around when the charter was, was written.
Yeah, so if I could just through the chair, so what, what, what happens if the, so what happens if the police chief decides he doesn't want to move to Hoyok?
The chief of police is by charter, has to live in Hoyok.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Murphy's next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, so a couple of things, I know at the last meeting, Counselor Bartley requested that I try to solicit a from another attorney, their, their thoughts on this, and I did do that, I, the person had asked to maintain their confidentiality, which I will do. It is someone that I think many of you, if not most of you, would know. And after reviewing all of the information that I was able to- And after reviewing all of the information that I was able to provide, they did agree that this is in fact an authorized process based on the law and that it's back pay and that is agreeable. Just one other point, and I just got the new chief's contract and it does require a residency in the contract as well. So, and obviously it'd be a violation of the contract if there is not residency, so.
That contract has to come before the city council too, you know.
Yep, one last, one last point if I can, and that is, you know, I'm trying to get these dual roles in my head. And, you know, I want to, I want to try to maintain as much neutrality as I can, but you know, there's going to be situations where, and this could be one of them, where I may be deciding vote. And I do have a question, and it was a question that was asked of me. And am I even able to abstain since I don't have a personal conflict of interest? And I've been told that I don't think you can do that. I think you have to vote as long as you don't have a personal conflict of interest. So can you explain?
Yeah, that's, that's how I've been told in the past. I'm not the authority there. But I've told in the past, you have a conflict, you state the conflict and abstain, but if there's no conflict, you don't abstain from a vote. But once again, I'm not the legal authority on that issue.
So I just want, I just want my fellow counselors to appreciate what I'm trying to figure out and how I'm trying to balance all these things. So thank you.
So if there's no one else, the motion is, oh, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna weigh in just briefly. So I appreciate everybody's inputs. I apologize, and I already apologized to the finance chair in writing. He didn't respond to it, but I'm sure he accepted it. I apologize for getting out of hand, Mr. President, at the last meeting. I don't know if I initiated that or whatever, but it doesn't matter. I do apologize.
Yeah, let me say one thing. For everyone, it gets heated here. We do our thing. Everyone came back to order. I appreciate it, but to me, it was a debate and I appreciate the debate.
There you go. So there you go. And I've had it out with just about everybody here, and I've always apologized every time, usually on the floor, but we can't do on the floor and sometimes a little weirder here in the Zoomer and that's the way it goes. So say it on the record. So with that being said, I do disagree with this. I appreciate, I appreciate the votes we just took. I don't, I don't think that, that the person in question, I don't disparage that person. I don't disparage anything that the person done. I just don't think the person, I believe strongly that how, no matter how many times you spin around this, this is going back fiscal years and I don't, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with the legal advisory or the legal opinion, whatever you call it. That I requested a legal opinion the last, that's how we got to this point, you know, so legal advisory, illegal opinion, I think is pretty thin. While I appreciate the acting mayor, I have no reason whatsoever to doubt him. But when I don't see something in a written form on, Mr. President, it's hard for me to evaluate it, no matter how much I have faith in the integrity of the person saying that. So it's tough for me to, it's tough for me to agree with something like that when I don't see it in writing. That, so, and then what's, what's, you know, what could, I believe what's gonna, what should happen is that, is that we all get emails over the weekend. I think this is, regardless, this is going to require a two-thirds vote, Mr. President. I think that's state law. And I hope it will stick with it, with a two-thirds vote, no matter how, if anybody wants to vote, that's the way they're going to vote. But I, you know, I hope we can, we can take the vote tonight. That however the vote comes out, we accept the vote the way it is. I, it's my hope that, you know, I mean, we got to this point because it wasn't because it was proposed, it didn't pass our procedural standards. It didn't get the two-thirds vote, it didn't pass the first meeting and it didn't pass the second meeting with two-thirds. That's how we got here. I mean, that's just following our rules, Mr. President. You know, you had Jeff verify it, I verified it, and you accept it. We followed our rules. That's how we got here to this point, and it was defeated. Now it's brought back up again, that's fine. But my hope and expectation is that we'll take a final action on this this evening. That regardless of how it turns out, we're not going to have motions to reconsider for the purposes of tabling. For any, we just take a vote now and we'd be done with it. That's my hope and expectation for this evening, Mr. President. Because as we heard, this is now before us round three. We've had other votes come up before us multiple times. Our bar foundation comes right to mind, and that didn't, that ultimately didn't make it. But again, we follow procedure and that's how, that's how that vote felt, fell out. I hope this vote tonight, whatever it is, we just conclude the business and move on. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern? Oh, Counselor Graney first for the first time.
Mr. President, there's no question in my mind, I sincerely believe that Attorney Barnes deserves the money. But I cannot vote to support this because I believe that the procedural issues, I just, I just don't believe that they were, they were followed the right way. I don't, I don't believe in the procedure. The way we did this, I just can't, I can't sign on to it. She deserves the money, but I can't support it because of the way it's been done. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Counselor Bartley, I did not receive anything in writing. That's the only reason I didn't respond. But you do not have to send anything in writing, David. I certainly apologize myself because whatever triggers were that night, it wasn't just about you. It was like a little bit of whatever they call it these days, COVID fatigue or whatever. I was upset, but I also, Mr. President, apologize to you and the rest of the body because I kept saying, I object, and I was supposed to be saying point of order. But anyways, David, if you and I, every time we go at each other, you're not the only one. That's part of, as Counselor McGee said, our president very wisely said, sometimes it's the heat of the battle and that's because we're so involved. And I do apologize to everyone. Procedural, I'm not sure what the procedures are. We haven't followed. I will say one thing just to clarify, and this is why we're here. Law is an appropriation, whether it's by transfer or the initial appropriation, such as the budget, is a simple majority, period. That is all. It's all it takes is a simple majority, and that's important because the rules that we have by, you know, and I believe it's by, you know, by charter, is we cannot have, we cannot pass a first and second meeting on the same evening. Now, I can't tell you what the founding fathers were thinking about, but I think the common sense is when a mayor puts an appropriation in front of us such as this, we can't pass it on the same night without two thirds. When that happened, there weren't committees. Everything was done at the full city council, all the board of aldermen level, tabled for another two weeks and then passed unless there was a two-thirds majority that wanted to pass something on the first, at the first go. We now have a finance, we have a lot of subcommittees. We put these things in finance committee. I've said it before, I believe the first reading is when we receive it. Majority of counselors disagree with that. I respect that. We have to have a formal vote. At the meeting that this was a formal vote, I already said, I made the mistake of assuming that it had passed the first reading. I was corrected, and the president and then as acting mayor, and now an acting mayor have both put it back in front of us for a procedural, correct procedural vote. It does need two-thirds of the vote to pass tonight. However, it needs a simple majority to pass the first reading this evening, which is proper procedure. And then if we don't have two-thirds to pass the second reading, it is up to the majority of this body, put it on the table to the next city council meeting where it can be passed a second reading. That is correct procedure of our charter, of our rules, and the mass general laws is most important, a simple majority for final vote.
Anyone further? All right, so the motion, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that no matter how, we can, I'm just going to print it out right here. That anyone viewing this, especially the acting mayor, if he wants to, you know, go before, so it's forty-four, chapter forty-four, thirty-three A. And it said, I think it says in there pretty clearly, it's two-thirds vote of the council at any time. Now that's, so we'll, let's just, I'm just going to throw that out there and so anybody can consider that law. And we'll, just to take the, I move the question as, as we like to say it on here.
So.
Move the question.
On the question?
Point of information?
Yep, Counselor McGivern?
Can I have that chapter again?
I'm sorry, Joe. Forty-four thirty-three A is an apple.
Okay, that's the same chapter that we use when we pass the budget by a simple majority, which is a big appropriation.
Okay. So with that, we are currently at Counselor Anderson Burgos for the first time.
Yeah, I'm just, I just got off the phone with Counselor Hernandez. She's having issues, technical issues. So she lost the meeting and she can't get back in and she's nowhere near a computer. I just wanted to relay that message.
It happens. So here, the motion is currently to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Motion to table, Mr. President, for the next city council meeting.
Motion is to table. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's no longer debatable. All those in favor of table? Okay, okay, so we'll, there was a quest for show of hands, so do a show of hands so I can say it correctly. So show of hands if you're, one roll call, you need two more.
Well, I'll do, I'll do a roll call too. It doesn't matter.
All right, so roll call to table. I'm going to go down the list. Anderson Burgos. Bartley.
No.
Graney.
No.
Hernandez. Leahy. Okay, Counselor Bor Martinez.
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Leahy, yes. Counselor Bor Martinez, you're on mute. Counselor Lee, she's not here. Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
I have six for table, four for no, so it wouldn't pass. You need seven.
President, a point of, a point of, I'm not even sure what it's a point of, but we have a quorum check.
Quorum check, we have, I'm just going to look at the screen.
I'd like to have a roll call quorum check, Mr. President.
Roll call, quorum check.
I can see seven.
Counselor LeBron is here, but I don't know where she's at currently. She's.
She's not here if she doesn't answer a roll call. Then the six passes. We need a parliamentary procedure, parliamentary officer for these meetings.
Have to go back to the council chambers.
That'll be, that'll be in time. It's being redone. It is being redone. So there was a call for a quorum check. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Just say you're here. Bartley, here. Graney.
Yeah, I'm here.
Counselor Hernandez. Counselor Leahy. Counselor Bor Martinez. Counselor Lee.
Nothing's happening with Counselor LeBron Martinez, but it's not audible.
Counselor McGee, here. Counselor McGivern. Counselor Bor Martinez.
Yes.
You're here?
Yep.
Let me go back up, change the quorum. She is here.
Yes.
Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Mr. President?
Hold on, Bartley, Counselor Bartley, hold on. One second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I have eleven for quorum. Back to Counselor Bartley.
Just, just so I'm clear, just through the chair to the acting mayor. You called this meeting, did you not, Mr. Acting Mayor? Did you not call the special meeting?
Yes, I did.
Did you not set the agenda, Mr. Acting Mayor?
What was that?
Did you, did you set the agenda, Mr. Acting Mayor?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and do you not want to go through the agenda that you set and you dragged us all here tonight, sir? I mean, you just, you just vote to table it. I mean, I find this disingenuous at best, Terry. But, you know, tell me, do you not want to go through this or not?
I want to go through it, but I also want this to be acted on.
On the motion.
Well, we would act on it if you don't table it. Let's act on it. I mean, come on, come on.
So is, is there a motion?
Quorum call, that's a first.
So is there a motion? I don't have one.
Move the question, please.
Motion to move the question.
Motion to table. Does it pass?
It did not pass.
Well, Counselor Bor Martinez, there was a motion to table. Did you?
We already, we already voted.
Well, Counselor can vote if she was not in the room.
You've already voted on this, Mr. Chairman.
Gladys gets the vote.
This is not, this is, this is not true.
Order, order, order. Counselor LeBron Martinez first. Counselor Bor Martinez, when there was, there was, there was a roll call with a request to table items two and three. We couldn't hear you. We know Counselor Hernandez, his phone has died. Therefore, we are asking you on that vote, are you looking to table or no?
I don't know what the question was because I had to step away.
So the question is orders two and three?
This is out of order.
No, no, it's not. The counselor can vote.
Let the president talk for crying out loud.
All right, everyone, please stop. Please stop. It's, it's procedure. Items two and three, I, hold on, let me explain what Counselor Burn has asked about. Orders two and three were tabled, of which, oh, not tabled, they were taken up as a package. That is for the payout of the city solicitor. Of which it got to first reading. Prior to a vote on first reading, there was a request to table. That was seconded. We went down the roll. You were not here to be able to vote. The question is, would you like to vote on that?
I want to vote on it. But why is the reason, why is there being tabled is the thing. I had to step away. Listen, I'm taking care of someone who's ill and I can't. It's too much.
It, it wasn't debated as to why it was tabled. It was just asked to table.
It ends the debate.
It has. Am I correct? It ends the debate. What?
It has passed first reading.
No, it was, it was.
After first reading, I made a motion to table. Because we don't have enough votes to pass a second reading this evening because we have to have a. What is the wild, Mr. President?
Come on, so look at Counselor Martinez has the floor. Do you have any further questions, Counselor Bor Martinez?
I do not have any further questions. So I vote to table it. I vote to table it.
That would make it seven to four with two absent. So motion is to table. Is there anything else?
Ah, motion to adjourn.
Before, before adjournment, please understand that there's a finance meeting right after this. Therefore, just stay on and then finance will take up. So motion is to.
Finance meeting will be convened in five minutes.
All right, so it'll be at six fifty-five, it will start up. Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Well done.
And adjourn.